Um, next we'll move on to the resolution to four point zero one to proceed with the proposition of income tax point seven five percent and may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this resolution, please?
Uh, yes, thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So I actually put together a short PowerPoint. Um, just so that we have some visuals for what's actually
Thank you.
gonna be on the ballot, uh, should the board approve this resolution. I just want to remind everybody where we've been and where we are today. So we went through the state budget process, um, had various versions of the school funding formula and what that looks like for school districts. The governor did sign the final version of the budget that was approved by the conference committee on June thirtieth, uh, along with sixty-seven vetoes. Um, so we're very grateful to the governor for a lot of the vetoes that he did pass. And I just want to thank our community for their advocacy around school funding, um, how the state's budget process was going to impact our local school community. Um, I think, you know, this isn't, and the conversation is not over. The House actually met today to override a provision, one of the vetoes that the governor had. There's two other provisions that are still pending there. Um, but it'll be a continuing conversation. They do have the entire biennial budget period to override veto should they decide to do that. Uh, but again, thank you to our community for their advocacy under the school funding space and with the budget process. Um, it, it definitely made an impact and made a difference, um, for the good. So where we landed with the state funding formula out of the budget, um, it's continuing to be phased in. So it'll be eighty-three percent in the current year fiscal year twenty-six and then a hundred percent in fiscal year twenty-seven. Still using those fiscal year twenty-two cost inputs, so still being funded based on the cost of education in twenty-twenty-two versus today's costs. And that will be for twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, updates the local wealth calculation with the most current data. So we still have an out of balance formula where it looks like, um, our community is wealthier, but we're not adding more dollars to the state funding formula with the costs. And, um, it does add a slight, uh, base cost supplement of twenty-seven dollars per student. It adds an enrollment growth supplement for eligible districts and adds a performance-based supplement for eligible districts. So still getting the final details on what districts would be eligible for that. That'll be, that will depend on what our data looks like for this year and next year, um, for whether or not we will be eligible for that. And then reduced career awareness exploration dollars. It reworks how students are identified as economically disadvantaged for the disadvantaged pupil impact aid that's been in the formula for a very long time. Um, there is a direct certification process that, uh, you know, if families receive, uh, services directly from the county, uh, we are able to have them directly certified as economically disadvantaged from county services. And that also applies to Medicaid, um, if they receive Medicaid. Uh, this, um, now changes that calculation where seventy-five percent will be based on the applications plus the direct certification. But going forward, they're trying to phase in where all of the economically disadvantaged students are based on the direct certification. I think it's important to understand that, um, we have about seventeen hundred students who qualify for, uh, free and reduced lunch, which is what we're talking about, um, through the application process, not through direct certification. So if I'm thinking forward, does that mean we're gonna be not counting those students in that economically disadvantaged number in the future? So, um, more to come with that, but I think that's the ultimate goal with this. Also, um, it adds a lot of, uh, a lot more, um, administrative work onto our food services team to verify applications. Uh, previously, I think we only had to verify ten percent and now we're verifying a hundred percent of those applications, um, as part of this process. So again, it's adding a huge administrative burden, which means an increase in our administrative costs, um, that wasn't included in the funding formula for additional dollars. Just want to make sure that's clear to everybody. Um, it also updates the minimum state share calculations for transportation. So still waiting on, um, actual details, numbers, calculations behind this. I, I do anticipate that we will see some of the components updated, um, in July from the Ohio Department of Education and workforce with our funding formula, but the majority of these will not be completely updated until our, our October payments. Um, so there will be a transition period for us to see exactly where we stand. Were you gonna say something? Okay. Yeah. Uh, so that's the state funding formula, um, where we landed with what was approved. Uh, one of the provisions that was in the budget bill, uh, was the clawback or the cash cap or clawback, uh, provision. Uh, so the House had introduced this concept, again, uh, hadn't been part of any previous conversations, but the House had introduced this concept, uh, where school districts and only school districts could only carry over no more than thirty percent in a fund balance of their previous year's expenses. Uh, the Senate version up that to fifty percent. The conference committee came together and settled at forty percent. So that's what was before the governor, um, for consideration as he was signing the bill. The governor did veto this provision, um, uh, as part of his sixty-seven vetoes. So I'm not hearing that this is something that's gonna come back up as part of the veto override. Uh, but there are several pieces of legislation that are in various committees, um, at the State House where a portion of this is being considered. So it's important that we continue to keep an eye on what that might look like.
I think it's important to mention too, and we talked about this at previous meetings, that, um, it is the recommendation of the legislators that we look at the accounting changes that we made. So, you know, we talked about the, the money that we moved. Um, and just to clarify, those are operational expenses that were already planned in our five-year planning documents. And when we talk about technology, those are updating computers as they age out, um, taking care of the, uh, projectors and other devices in our classrooms as they age out. Those are already planned expenditures that are part of our operations. We're just recoding how that is listed in our budget, um, per the recommendation of our legislators. So I just want to point out those aren't new projects or things that we are doing.
And I think it's important to understand too, the expenses were moved along with the fund balance. So it also decreased our expenses overall in our, uh, general operating fund as we moved the fund balance out. And now we'll be paying for those things out of that fund. It's just an accounting piece that, um, our legislators and, you know, I, I can't necessarily disagree with them, believes will create a more transparent situation for our community to understand how those dollars are planned to be spent. So, um, that's what we're looking at moving forward. So regardless of the clawback or cap provision, I wouldn't recommend changing that accounting practice at any point if everyone feels that that's a more transparent practice. Uh, so, uh, where we landed, based on the Legislative Services Commission, um, their calculations, they did simulations for the districts that came out of the conference committee and what was ultimately approved in the school funding formula, uh, we would lose about two-point-three million over the next two years, um, from the state funding formula. Uh, other funding challenges we have, Angie shared a slide at the last meeting on this during her superintendent's comments. Um, our federal funds, we have several of our federal grants that were put on hold. Um, we found out on June thirtieth that we were supposed to receive those allocations on July first. Uh, they have already been appropriated by Congress, um, and we're not quite sure why they're being held at this point. We had been told, uh, I guess throughout this process, you know, there's a lot of conversation about abolishing the US Department of Education and returning money back to the states and what that all looks like. Uh, we had been, uh, told repeatedly throughout these conversations that that would not impact schools until fiscal year twenty-seven because funds had already been appropriated for fiscal years twenty-six. So it looks like we may be looking at not receiving about that, um, nine-hundred-and-nineteen thousand that we have. So for professional development, um, some of our, uh, English learner family supports and things like that, um, that those dollars cover. So, uh, we will keep an eye on, um, you know, this moving forward and see where we land with that.
Nicole, before you move on really quickly, I know you've talked about this in the past. How underfunded have we been since, I think you said since twenty-twenty-one, and this on, now adds on top of that?
So if we take just what the, um, state's own calculation has provided for what the district should receive, um, which I can't even completely agree that that was an appropriate calculation, right? It's probably more, much more than that. Um, we've been underfunded by about forty-five million since twenty-twenty-one. Um, that doesn't count the actual funding decreases that we've seen, um, over that same time period and the shift in the funding formula and how they netted our funding because of what was going to private and charter schools. Uh, it's a very complicated matter, but if we just look at what the state calculated funding we should be receiving and what we were actually receiving, it's about forty-five million dollars since that time.
Thank you.
Uh, so what you have before you tonight is a resolution to proceed with an earned income tax. I just want to make sure it's clear what this does and doesn't apply to. So earned income tax applies to residents of the school district. So our fifty-two square miles, anyone that lives, resides within that fifty-two square miles boundaries of the school district who earn wages and net self-employment income. So they look at the modified adjusted gross income on the Ohio income tax return. Um, it does not apply to retirement, social security benefits, unemployment, interest, dividends, or capital gains. There are two different types of school district income taxes that schools can ask their community for. One is traditional and one is earned income. Traditional does apply to all of those things. Earned income does not. So I shared with the board previously estimates from the Ohio Department of Taxation, who actually calculates the estimates for income taxes. I don't do that myself. Um, and there was a much larger number had we done a traditional income tax versus a earned income tax. And so, um, that's what this is, is the earned income tax. I just want to make sure that's clear. And so, uh, my recommendation for the November fourth ballot, uh, is the point seven-five percent. We had talked about, um, potentially looking at a one-point-two-five percent. That was because of the conversations around eliminating the inside millage for our local taxes. That's about three-point-eight mills. It generates about sixteen-point-three million a year. That difference in that percentage would have made up the difference in the, it, had they eliminated the inside millage. Not saying that that's not possible to happen in the future. There is legislation where, that would provide for that, uh, should that pass. But that was not part of the budget bill conversations. There was talk about adding it to it. It didn't get added. Nothing has been passed. So my recommendation is that we move forward with the point seven-five percent. It would generate an estimated annual revenue of twenty-three, twenty-four-point-three million. Uh, and it starts in calendar year twenty-six and we would realize full collection in fiscal year twenty-seven. And the purpose to support daily operations.
Could you just hit on the impact of the compounding effect of delaying collection of taxes? And so if we would have collected taxes two years previously compared to when this will kick in, what that impact is, please?
If you think about, uh, a property tax, we would have seen collections beginning as early as twenty-six. Um, the calendar year because of the way we, it phases in those collection, the income taxes, the way it phases in those collections, we don't see those actual full-year collections until fiscal year twenty-seven. And so, um, as we're seeing, you know, the cost of doing business continue to rise, that it does in the school district, the same as it does in any business or organization. Just that year over year, as we continue to see less revenues, higher expenses, um, the need grows year over year. And so, uh, but my recommendation for this issue, uh, should we be on in November would be the point seven-five percent. Uh, it would generate about twenty-four-point-three million, depending on, um, I, I can't stress this enough, but this is an estimate. Uh, I had gotten estimates from the Ohio Department of Taxation early on that said a point seven-five percent would be nearly twenty-six million. So this was a big shift just from estimates I got, I received in April versus June. So this is, it's very volatile. I do think this would allow an opportunity for growth in revenue should incomes grow. Um, but at the same time, should incomes decline, it would also provide for a decline in revenue, uh, going forward. And you know, the conversation, um, with our, a lot of the state lawmakers around diversifying our revenue and that we shouldn't be asking our community to continue to pass property taxes, um, and what that looks like. Uh, I think that this is the best approach that we can, our only options are to either, um, ask our community for a property tax levy, ask our community for an income tax levy, either traditional or earned income tax, or to make significant reductions to the school programming. I think we've reduced where we can. Uh, and, you know, part of the conversation before the ballot issue, I would suggest that the board consider a very concise list of things that would be reduced should we not be successful in November so that our community completely understands what this will pay for, um, should it pass. So I think that that's important. So, yeah. Did that answer your question, Angie? Uh, so I've showed this before. I, this was from a Legislative Service Commission member brief, uh, from February of twenty-twenty-five. And it, the blue shows, um, school districts that have an active school district income tax. You can see how they're all spread out there. So I did do like a zoom in. You can see where we fall, uh, there in the middle. And then I listed all of the schools that have an income tax, the first year they started, and then, uh, and the county that they're in for all of the surrounding counties, um, for Franklin and Delaware County where we reside. So I know it's kind of hard to read. Um, I can send the board a list later so that you guys have, uh, something that you can read. I just wanted to get this out there so that you could see that. That's all I had. Are there any questions from the board?
Um, Ms. Marshall, you, you've, I think, covered it well. I'm just wondering if you can, um, clarify for us. So how the, the number that was arrived at, right, in terms of point seven-five in that calculation, you're talking about how it changed? Do you have an understanding from their estimate of how it changed? Are they looking at actual wages and a change in actual wages?
Yeah, they are looking at actual wages from, because they have more current data to update those estimates. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it can, it can have quite a large swing when we're talking about earned income specifically.
And the point seven-five that you are suggesting is kind of the amount that will help us to cover that shortfall that we're looking at, right?
Yeah. So when we look at, um, you know, the, where our revenues are today and where our expenses are today after all of the reductions that we've made, uh, we know we're gonna continue to see increase in costs as we continue to see just increase in inflation and student needs and all of those things. Um, just looking at, uh, you know, fiscal year twenty-five alone, even after all of the reductions that we made, we were still deficit spending by about eight million dollars, a little bit over eight million dollars. This year will be about nineteen, twenty million dollars. And this is after moving those other expenses out because we've moved the fund balance. Um, but we're looking at about twenty to twenty-four million dollars just over the next, this year and next year. By the time we would realize, um, full collections on that. And so, um, I think that while it won't completely get us out of deficit spending in the future, should our revenues from the state continue to look the way that they do, um, I think that it will be a more workable situation for us to be able to try to bring some of our costs down in the future. Um, but without the adequate revenues to make up what we have right now, we're talking about making some significant programmatic changes that we'll want to, um, list out for the community.
And that amount of shortfall, that is not taking into account should the clawback come back? Or should, you know, the federal government just stop funding?
No. So it doesn't take into account anything with the federal funds going away, um, or the clawback. I think it's important to understand that the clawback, um, if, if we were subject to that, um, cap on our carryover balance, we would be in a much different situation today, uh, since filing that levy last November, um, than what we were. Fortunately, we were able to make reductions without huge significant impacts to our student population. Um, but should that, should we have not had the cash balance to help kind of float us through that difficult time, I think that we would be making, having a much different conversation for sure.
Thank you.
I just, I know, um, you know, we heard, w- we can only do this in increments of point-two-five, right? And so this is why point-five wasn't enough and point-seven-five is what we really need here to be able to, be able to fill this deficit and still, you know, potentially not knowing what's coming at us, um, from the feds or the state because House Bill three-thirty-five still exists. And that's where a lot of this other tax provisions are.
House Bill three-thirty-five, plus there's a lot of other standalone bills that have pieces and parts to that, and they're all still sitting in, in different committees. Um, and I think it's important to understand too, uh, that when we're looking at projections and, um, you know, talking about whether we're at, uh, point-seven-five, or we were actually between a point-seven-five and a one percent. And we felt like we could adjust as needed with the point-seven-five percent should we land there. Um, without, unless we lost our inside millage and then that was the other, the one-point-two-five percent conversation. So after we got the updated figures, um, we were initially thinking point-five, but because of those updated figures, that's where we landed.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, but, um, the veto line today would eliminate the possibility of an emergency levy if we needed one? If this point-seven-five wasn't enough? Is that correct? We would not be able to ask for an emergency levy?
Yeah, so the veto override today did eliminate the ability for school districts to ask for an emergency levy or a replacement levy, um, in the future. So, um, it won't impact anything we currently have, but should we need to go back and ask for that, that's not an option in the future, so.
Um, I just want to return real quickly, excuse me. So you talked about, this is an earned income. Um, you know, that's inflationary potentially if incomes go up. Excuse me. I just want to remind everyone that, um, property taxes are only inflationary on the inside mills, right? Um, so that what we currently have in terms of property tax, those voted mills, not inflationary. So as costs go up, right, that's why with property taxes you constantly have to go back. Um, so when legislators told us to diversify, I mean, this is one of the things that's important is that there is potential for the income, um, portion to grow, which is only a small portion of our local tax share. But just, that's a difference. So I just want to be clear about that with folks. And then I'm just wondering, I don't expect that you have this number, um, handy. But do we know really what the real cost of services are that we provide to private and non-public charters? Like have we added those dollars up, transportation intervention, like all the other services that we are required to provide?
Um, I don't know that I have that number off the top of my head. I, um, have, I, I don't have that off, off the top of my head. I, I've looked at it, uh, in different periods of time throughout the years. It's definitely grown a lot. Um, but, yeah, I'd have to.
Yeah, that's okay. I wouldn't expect that that's a number that you update every five minutes, but, um, I think for me.
Never-changing number.
Well, that's the thing, right? It's an ever-changing number, but I think, um, understanding our best estimate of where that is now, I would appreciate knowing that if we could update things.
Uh, the other thing I want to mention as part of the state's biennial budget process is, um, the state is actually reducing the state income tax. Um, by the second year of the biennial, it will be reduced by the point seven-five percent for anyone earning more than a hundred thousand dollars, um, a year. So, uh, this would be an offset for those folks over that hundred thousand dollar mark, um, once they got past that mark. So, um, just throwing that out there as a note to make sure everybody's aware. And then, uh, the, you know, the whole conversation around property taxes, I think we've heard loud, loud and clear, um, from just not only our community, but also as we've been around the state and having conversations with lawmakers. And, you know, there is a potential, uh, ballot initiative to eliminate, completely abolish property taxes in the state of Ohio, um, that if they're not on the ballot this November, they're hoping to be on the ballot in the spring. Um, I think that this is, uh, definitely one of the things that have, has prompted our legislature to really take a look at property tax relief and reform and that whole conversation. I don't disagree that we need property tax reform. We need property tax relief. I, um, have a whole host of things that I know the legislature has at least admitted to why they, why our property tax system is broken. Um, so I'm hoping that I can participate on the governor's work group that he's putting together, to help inform that conversation some. I think, you know, if we look at where we've been with the elimination of the tangible personal property taxes on businesses over years ago, um, the continued shift, um, on, uh, with the tax abatements, the incentive financing agreements, the drop-down LLCs, all of the special provisions in law that have sort of carved out the tax base and who's paying property taxes, has really caused a huge shift, um, overall. And so we know that the property tax system is broken. I think, um, for the districts that aren't like ours and they're not subject to those House Bill nine-twenty reduction factors, uh, that's another big conversation, right? The districts that are at the twenty-mill floor and, and the tax increases that those communities are seeing. So that's not the same for our area, for a lot of the suburbs, suburbs around here. Um, but I, I don't think that the conversation about property tax reform is going away anytime soon, even if they don't, or even if the legislature doesn't override the governor's vetoes. I think we're gonna continue to have this conversation. So I'm hoping that this state can really do the work and make some real meaningful change for folks that need it. Um, and I'm hoping I can be part of that conversation. So I'm trying to be on that committee. I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a committee that was put together and put together a very comprehensive list of suggestions for real property tax relief, and none of those made it into the budget.
Yeah, so there was a joint commission that, that was made up of, um, state senators and state house members. They met over, it was during calendar year twenty-twenty-four. They had a series of hearings, um, where they heard from different folks. And they, uh, gave a recommendation, they sent out a recommendation on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. It had twenty-two recommendations, I think, uh, two and a half pages worth. And the clawback provision, there were a lot of provisions that were nowhere on that, um, on that recommendation. I think, uh, the governor's remarks with his vetoes were that he wanted to create a work group that included all stakeholders and not just members of the legislature, um, to take a look at this, which I think I appreciated anyway. Um, and I, I do want to make sure everybody understands too, um, you know, when, when the conversation surrounds property taxes, people tend to focus on public schools, but property taxes fund a lot more than just public schools. For the most part, uh, for our community, you probably pay about sixty percent of your tax bill to your, to the local school district versus forty percent goes to various other taxing jurisdictions as well. So, um, it's not just a school conversation if we're talking about adjusting property taxes and having property tax reform.
And there's only two ways that we can raise money, right? Besides the state and the feds. But those are property taxes and
Income taxes.
And, and income tax. And so we've been told, as we've said, by the legislature to diversify.
Yeah.
We are listening to our community and we're listening to the legislature and, and what's potentially coming at us too.
Right.
Thanks.
I just want to add too, I think it's important to note that, um, you know, we would love to see a different type of funding mechanism in our state. Other states fund schools differently. Um, the fact that school districts have to go back on the ballot and engage in those kind of conversations, quite frankly, distracts from the work that we're trying to do for our kids. And so, um, you know, it is, at this point, the way schools are funded in Ohio and it is necessary. But I think it's important to note that, you know, we do have to spend a lot of time, um, on educating and, and communicating about this issue and previous issues versus being able to focus on what we need to do for our kids and our staff. So I think, I just want to note that because I think sometimes maybe people, you know, lose sight of the fact that this is not our core business, going out and trying to raise money. Our core business is to educate kids.
And should the economy shrink, um, or remain stagnant, we wouldn't be able to keep pace with our income by adding this, correct? Like if we were in a recession, heaven forbid, but people go on unemployment, that wouldn't be taxable. We would, if people have lost their jobs. So this is a much more dynamic component to, I mean, hopefully the economy grows and ergo, our, our revenue continues to meet our expenses. Uh, but if it were to shrink, we would have a, yeah, be back here having this discussion about the tough choices, correct?
Yeah. It's definitely a more volatile source of revenue than, um, property taxes are. I think a lot of districts during the last recession saw a decrease in their overall revenue from their income taxes because incomes dropped at that time. Um, so that's always a possibility in the future too. So this is, again, just trying to diversify. So this is, again, just trying to diversify the revenue that we do have and maybe have an opportunity to see some growth in revenue in the future should income grow. Because right now we don't really have that much with property taxes because that inside millage is the only piece that we see growth on.
Sorry. And in terms of property taxes, Westerville as a whole is a bit landlocked. Like we don't have a lot of expansion left to potentially grow property tax base like some other districts do.
We don't, yeah, we don't have a ton, but I do think there are different, various parts that have a little bit of opportunities for development, but it depends on what kind of tax incentive agreements are put into place before that happens and what that looks like.
I think it's important to note too, that if it's residential development, typically an individual home does not pay enough in taxes to cover the cost of educating those kids, which is challenging. So that's where you want that, more of the commercial or industrial type revenue to offset that as well.
Any other, thank you for all of that discussion. Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to take a vote? All right. What'd you call the vote, please?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.